Council Biden.
President.
President, Council Cahill.
President.
President, Council Capano.
President.
President, Council Calucci.
President.
President, Council Pryton.
President.
President, Council Seer. Abson, Council Ford.
President.
President, Council Lozey.
President.
President, Council Annette.
Present.
President, Council Phelan.
Present.
President, Council Trahan.
Present.
President.
Can we all please rise and form a silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which is Spanish, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the light of justice for all. Communications?
We have a communication from the Office of Economic and Community Development via Council Phelan. You have the Office of Economic and Community Development and Lynn-Hawley Authority and Enablement Development. I'm requesting that you schedule a public hearing with the Lynn City Council on Tuesday, May 22, 2012. The purpose of this hearing is to allow public input into the city's annual action plan. Upon confirmation of this hearing date, our office will prepare the legal notes that will be advertised in the Daily Eye at least two weeks before the hearing date. Sincerely, Donald J. Walker.
What's the wish of the councils to schedule it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Biden?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend our business, uh, the St. Mary's Boys Basketball Team.
I'll second that motion. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Biden, if you could come to the podium. It seems that it has become a regular occurrence in the city of Lynn that we're recognizing our youth for both academic and athletic achievement. Tonight is no exception. I'm sure as people have seen both on TV and the local newspapers, the St. Mary's Boys Basketball Team won the state championship. By all accounts, they're better kids than they are basketball players, and they're obviously great basketball players. So with that, I'd like to introduce the former basketball coach of Lynn English High School to address the issue.
First of all, congratulations to the St. Mary's Boys Basketball Team. Job well done. You didn't only do St. Mary's proud, but you did the city of Lynn proud, and I thank you for that. I'd like to call it this time, Coach Moran, the voting, please.
Thank you very much. What I'd like to do is introduce Coach Mollie and Coach Lo, a part of the team this year. And I think, as stated earlier, I think one thing about this team, and we won't keep this very, we will keep this very brief, but one thing about this group of kids, as I can say, they did win athletically the Division Four State Championship, but they clearly as a group, I think, did very well. They handled themselves well, and they presented Lynn in a real fashion throughout the entire state, and I think that it's well deserved, and it is a representation of the good kids that come through City Hall Square, Lynn, and go across the street and go to school. So I think a job well done, and they have, and I congratulate you guys on that. (APPLAUSE). What we'll do now is we'll just introduce each of the players, some of whom unfortunately due to other sports commitments were unable to get here, but we clearly appreciate them as well, so we'll just read off their names and then introduce the players that are in the room tonight. Scott Betts, Kyle DeLippo, Matt Manning, Jonathan Capano, and Devin Thompson, not here tonight, but clearly members of the team that had a great season for us. (APPLAUSE). They're here tonight. First, John Teahan. A Lynn name that we should know, Tom DeBau. Another Lynn name, Randolph Thurman. Ryan McMahon. Michael Spagia. Brendan Moran. J.J. Campard. Last, the last of these who we recognize, Nick Gagnolo, who in addition to being a large part of our team, was selected this year as an awesome last, Nick Gagnolo. Once again, I really appreciate it. This one here that I think typifies this season, I thought to mention, we were fortunate this year to have a ball boy, Lucas D. Joy, who was with us all season. He helped us tremendously, and I think these guys, he's just as much a part of our team. He's not here tonight, but I think you know his father-in-law, Lucas D. Joy, was with us all year, and a ball boy, which we recognize as well. So I really appreciate it. (APPLAUSE).
If anybody wants to take a seat, you have to do this. Push it in and grab the paper. Public hearings?
For this public hearing, petition of Office of Economic and Community Development, James Marsh, for permission to place banners on decorative light poles in three locations in the city.
I'd open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Good evening. My name is Michael Murray. I work for the Department of Public and Community Development. You've applied for a special permit to install banners on the decorative streetlights. You're going to make second business district apartments in Lyomne Square, and basically they'll be used to promote events and activities going on throughout the city during the year.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. What's the wish of the council?
Who?
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Council Cahill?
Mr. President, thank you. If we just had Mike come back up, I just have a few questions about, oh, thank you. Do you, Mr. Chairman? Mike, when you use the term decorative light poles, what does that mean? Is it...
But the streetlights that we've installed throughout the central business district, the antique streetlights.
But you said that I was also wondering why you wish to...
Well, there's talk, I guess in the future, of possibly installing them in Lyomne Square or broadly.
So until the decorative lighting poles go in, you would not be unable to install equipped banners?
Right.
I might read you this correctly.
Right now, we do have them on the columns and the entire central business district.
This is going to be for the auditorium, I imagine?
I would, yes. The other events that go on in the city during the year, activities.
The city council approves, I think, out of three locations throughout the city for, like, little leagues and soccer teams and stuff. This is something separate?
Yes.
By any control?
The people who do the Knuckle Rock at Christmas time are interested in using these to promote their show, and I think it's pretty much for any event activity that's going on in the city throughout the year, we'd have access to put a banner on these poles.
So the little leagues are doing as well?
I believe so.
Why do you need the authority to do it, like, you know, the city council? You just approve three more sites than you would have.
Well, we have to. We have built a building, I have special services, and it requires a special program. Besides, the special services, regular sign for it, but this required a special program that the council moved.
And this would take it out of our realm and remain your...
Just for these locations that we apply for.
So essentially, fifty-seven locations, there's only three in the city that we utilize this land for, so six locations, three approved by the council, three of your discretion?
Yes.
To deposit?
Any further questions, Bill? Counsel Calucci?
Will to approve.
Already having the motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Council Cahill?
Thank you. I just, I just warn you, yes, of setting such a precedent where there's three locations currently now that we control, that basically people have to go through the city council to petition that we vet, that we give an opportunity to discuss with counselors of those three positions, those three locations for banners, for opening to three more, but giving the authority, I guess, to a department without our oversight, I just, I don't understand. Either we should be approving banners, or we shouldn't be approving banners, but to dole out free banners to another department and then have also prove free, I sound like it's going to be a confusing process, where if it is a little league, do they go through the city council for that three locations, or they go through...
Like, would a stipulation, the banner subject to city council approval?
Or I feel more comfortable if it was about promoting the economic development of the city. I think that makes sense. I'd like to hear from all the councils if they have any thoughts on the idea of, do the economic development, or, I'm sorry, the community development? I'm just curious about where we think the line should be drawn, or is this not a, just wasting everyone's time?
No debate is wasting time, counselor. Council Pryton?
I'd accuse. Mr. President, through you to the members, I guess a question I would have, how are the signs, how would these signs be, or these banners, decorative banners?
Well, the banner, the brackets that were made specifically for these by the manufacturer of light poles, and they measure eighteen by thirty-six.
But in terms of the content of them, I mean, is something that would be decided in-house?
Yes.
Do you have application process, or going at gun time, or is that yet to be...
That's yet to be determined, as far as what's going to be on. But like I said, I know that the people who do the Knuckle Rock at Christmas time have been interested to request these a couple of years ago, and as far as I know, they're going to be used just to promote events, activities that are going on in the city during the year. I don't think there's any, there's a ban that's been approved or anything like that. It's just to get the permit, you know, to install the brackets and everything, continuous.
Counsel, would you like to make a motion to table and address this issue in a more formal fashion, to promote some potential stipulations to address the concerns you may have?
Well, maybe a compromise, Mr. President. If I may suggest that the council has a further debate. What if we stipulate that the banners will be used to promote the Lynn auditorium, because that seems to be the main purpose of it? And should there be some kind of future need to readdress the situation? We can come back and discuss whether or not they want to expand upon it.
We'll put that in the form of a friendly amendment to the motion. Do I hear a second on the amendment? Second. Discussion on the amendment. Roll call on the amendment only.
Council Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci? Yes, Council Pryton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer? Abson, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey? Yes, Council Annette? Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan? Yes. Yes, ten, yes.
Any further discussion on the main motion as amended? On the main motion as amended, roll call.
Council Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci? Yes, Council Pryton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer? Abson, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey? Yes. Yes, Council Annette? Yes. Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next public hearing?
Petitioner, D'Amici Bakery, Joseph Turet, for permission for a food establishment, a retail store, seven to five, Monday through Friday, production seven days a week at forty-one Sutton Street.
I'd like to open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Mr. President, through you to the members of the council, on the turn of the hand by tally, with me this evening is Joe Turet and his lovely wife, Sharron. The Turets, people who have great faith in Lynn, live in Wakefield, but in November of nineteen ninety-three, they opened a bakery on Eastern Avenue in Lynn. It was their first operation. They now have locations in Wakefield, in Melrose. Because of the efforts of the people in the city of Lynn and welcoming them, an opportunity has arisen with a spectral building that's on the corner of Sutton and Libby. It has been idle and empty for almost three years. It used to be the home hybrid shade, crossed from now to when you went out and caught in that area. In fact, I think the Hispanic Association has taken a portion of that block. What Mr. Turet desires to do is, in the petition before you would allow, is to move his production operation to the city of Lynn. He currently employs sixty people, many of them are part-time, but there are fourteen decorators and bakers. He would use that location for production for his three sites, but he would still maintain the store, at least now, in Lynn, the one in Wakefield, and the one in Melrose. And since he's opening a facility there, he had an idea, which I think Council Pryton encouraged him with respect to, and that's to have as an adjunct to that, a retail shop that he called D'Amici's Downtown, and it would be open Mondays through Fridays from seven AM to five PM. Certainly, these are the people who are working in Lynn or on their way to the commuter rail station, and would be open to be compatible with those kinds of hours. So I know he's had conversations with the economic development people, Mr. Carrillo, Council Pryton, and what he asked the council to do is approve this opportunity to bring this development and these jobs to the city of Lynn.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Calvin Anderson. I live at twelve Concord Street, which is a very close neighbor to D'Amici's on Eastern Avenue. This proposal thrilled to me, because, take a look at their outfit, it's a high-class outfit, quality products, wonderful curb appeal, it's the type of signage and facade that should be exemplary and used all over the city. So if they want to bring this thing downtown, I think it's a great move. So welcome to the city downtown. Except, can you be open past five?
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Council Pryton?
Mr. President, to, through you to the members, I first want to thank the petitioners for their continued commitment to the city. I'm sure we've all enjoyed their defined products over the years, one of the finest bakeries I've seen in all of New England. This is a big, big step for the downtown as well. We'll have more employees down there, more feet on the ground, and I think a really attractive retail outlet as well, so I want to thank them for considering that. I think it's hard to argue, if you take a look at some of the prerogatives they made in the downtown recently, with EDC's work at Third and Sixth Central, fourteen central renovation, the new public art by Center Board. We can go on and on for the year, all night, but I think this is another big step forward to the petition. Motion approved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Council Calucci?
Please go ahead and take a look at this.
Council Cahill?
Mr. President, through you to Council Pryton. Council Pryton, very excited about this fine East Lynn bakery, providing those streets to the West Lynn residents. Of course, this is going to be a great addition to your ward, but to Mr. Anderson's point, would, I mean, is it possible to leave more room for their hours of operation, because if somebody hypothetically, such as myself, may drive home that way from work, five o'clock is just a little too early for me to get to D'Amici's, and I make sure that I get my slice of time of bread from you, although the one in West Lynn, I hope, has a missing tooth like the one in East Lynn. That's the only stipulation, I really give up, but could we at least leave it open to the proprietors, that maybe you have a seven o'clock close or something? I don't want to speak, but I understand, but I imagine the businesses there, which it will be, they will consider at some point examining their hours at seven o'clock. I hope I faithfully meet that petition.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, roll call.
Council Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci? Yes, Council Pryton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer? Abson, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey? Yes. Yes, Council Annette? Yes. Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan? Yes. Yes, ten, yes.
Our next public hearing?
Petitioner, Sarah, Sarah Aiko, for permission to sell food from a canteen-style vehicle on a magnolia route, Sunday through Friday, from nine AM to five PM.
Council Lozey?
Mr. President, I have spoken with the applicant. They are present here in the auditorium, and I have a letter here in hand that they are requesting to withdraw without prejudice this petition. I would like to make a motion that the clerk's office reimburse them for their fee minus the advertisement?
Well, that's fine. Let's do one at a time. Let's do a motion to accept the withdrawal. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Council Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci? Yes. Yes, Council Pryton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer? Abson, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Annette? Yes. Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan? Yes. Yes, ten, yes.
And if I understand, your second motion would be to reimburse the application fee, but not the money that the city spent to advertise the public hearing?
Correct.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Council Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci? Yes. Yes, Council Pryton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer? Abson, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Annette? Yes. Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan? Yes. Yes, ten, yes.
Anybody that's here in that petition, that petition has been withdrawn. We have a number of public hearings, which the clerk will read. If there's no opposition, we can, those can be set down for a public hearing, we can set those down together unless anybody wants to take one individually.
Petitioner, Seattle Locks and Company, Colin Reed, for permission for the packing of livestock to be shipped and out of Logan Airport at two seventy-one Western Avenue. Petitioner, Lynn Auditorium, James Marsh, Community Development, for permission for a wine and wine beverage license in three City Hall Square. Petitioner, BSJ Auto Centers, Caesar, Arco Dale, for permission for auto repair of flammables at twenty-two twenty-eight Oakville Street from eight AM to eight PM. Petitioner, Fiesta Show, Eugene Dean, for permission for a carnival fundraiser for Fourth of July fireworks at Keene Park. Lynn English on Friday, July sixth through Sunday, July eighth, and set up on July fifth. Petitioner, Lynn Way Auto Sales, Richard Asquod, trustee, permission for sales room for motor vehicles and auto repair body shop with flammables at four sixty-one Broad Street and Pleasant Street. Petitioner, Lynn Way Auto Exchange LLC, James Lamb, George Russo, Robert Brester, permission for a Class Two Dale's license to sell second-hand motor vehicles with auto repair flammables at two seventy South Common Street. Petitioner, Tacos Martinez, Rafael Martinez, for catering truck to be parked in the lot only at eight ten Lynn Way. Petitioner, Albert Kimberly Incorporated, Ryan G., for permission for a sign firm at ten seventy-three Brea Weston Avenue. Petitioner, Enablement Development Associates, in Oliver Toomey Clerk, for permission to allow the construction of four single-family dwellings in a business district at Summer and Morris Street.
What's the wish of the council? Motion set down for public hearing. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
I'm finished. Business and Finance Committee meeting on March twenty-seventh. There's three council orders. I will read them, and you can take them together or separate them. Order that the city control, being as hereby authorized to make the following appropriation transfer from the account of police expense to the account of unpaid bills of prior years, forty-one thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and sixty cents, from the account of private common expense to the account of unpaid bills of prior years, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents, from the account of election precinct officer expense to the account of city clerk expense, fourteen thousand, five hundred.
Council Calucci? Motion made. Do I hear a second? Discussion. Roll call.
Council Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Pryton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer? Abson, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Annette?
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan? Yes. Yes. Committee reports, we have the Ways and Means Committee, they've requested an emergency on the following order. Order that the may hereby authorize to execute all necessary documents, agreements, applications, and contracts for the purpose of securing grants from Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection.
Council Lozey?
To Council Trahan?
Motion made and seconded to approve. Roll call.
Council Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Pryton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer? Abson, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Annette? Yes. Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan? Yes. Yes, ten, yes.
And counsel, is that, you're requesting an emergency on that?
Yes.
Only emergency, roll call.
Council Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Pryton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer? Abson, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Annette? Yes. Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes.
And before I forget, I actually received a phone call from Council Seer today, who had surgery. He's unable to be here, wanted to be here, but was advised by his doctor not to, so I just wanted to state that for the record. Council Trahan?
I should, I ask, you then, who's voted the committee?
Motion set down to report. Do I hear a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Public Property Committee lays over to the next meeting. Finance Committee meeting, there is one order that they requested an emergency. I will read that for you. Order that the city council order dated October twenty-fifth, twenty-eleven, authorizing the city controls to make a transfer from the account of FEMA January snowstorm, three hundred and five thousand fifty-nine dollars and zero cents to the account of DPW snow and ice expense be hereby rescinded.
Motion made to approve, do I hear a second? Discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer, absent Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes.
On the emergency?
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer, absent Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes.
Counselor Capano?
Yes, I'd like to speak in favor of this resolution in support of Massachusetts Personal Care Attendant Program. I'd read the resolution, and then I'd like to suspend the rules to allow one of the workers to speak to the issue.
No, we can't make the part, uh, read the resolution now, and then we'll come back in a moment to suspend the rules. Thank you, Counselor.
In the year two thousand twelve, a resolution in support of the Massachusetts Personal Care Attendant Program. Whereas the Personal Care Attendant Program is a central piece of Massachusetts long-term care system, wherein PCA's offer skillful assistance with activities of daily living that allow more than twenty thousand Massachusetts residents to live independent lives at home, and whereas the PCA program is already both the most popular and cost-efficient state long-term care program, and is also ideally positioned to play a crucial role in future efforts to increase primary care services, implement new coordinated care systems, and cut control overall health care costs. And whereas the PCA program refuses four hundred million in state dollars to local Massachusetts communities, where this funding has a tremendous positive impact on the local economy, and provides quality jobs to over thirty thousand PCA's throughout the state, whereas the PCA program employs more than three hundred and fifty individuals residing in the city of Lynn, which brings more than three point nine million in state dollars to the community. And whereas eleven ninety-nine SEIU, United Health Care Workers East, the state administration, and the PCA Quality Home Care Workforce Council are committed to ensuring that the PCA program, consumers are efficiently provided the highest possible quality of health care, and that consumers, all these surrogates and PCA workforce are treated with the highest degree of dignity and respect. And whereas the purpose of organizing the PCA workforce and negotiating with collective bargaining agreement is to promote quality jobs and personal care attendance, and harmonious respectful relations between the parties in their pursuit of these shared commitments. And resolve, the Lynn City Council strongly supports the Massachusetts PCA program and the organized PCA workforce, and respectfully urge the state administration and the PCA Quality Home Care Workforce Council to negotiate in good faith for a new collective bargaining agreement that benefits the PCA program and workforce and consumers.
Counselor Capano, motion to suspend rules?
Yes.
For what purpose?
To allow one of the workers from SEIU eleven ninety-nine to speak to the issue of the resolution.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My English is not perfect. I wish I could speak English. I became a PCA for Lynn. I live in seven hundred years square here in Lynn. I am a PCA member of the U of eleven ninety-nine. I've taken care of my mother since two thousand and five. We are here to looking for your support and a fair contract for PCA's. Because PCA's is very important to give dignity and equality to the members who are in their homes, especially my mother. I don't take my mother often to the doctors and things, because I do very good care to her. I just take her to see a doctor once a year. What does that mean? That means I am, you know, trying to do my best to taking care of my mother, to economize for healthy insurance for this government, because all the people need to be cared. This is my opinion, to try to do my best for my mother, economize for this country, for all the people who need it, right? I am very gratitude for our council to give us a support and this fighting to better fair contract. All the benefits, like healthy insurance, but the most important right now is our fair contract. And thank you so much for everything you can do for us. Again, my name is Marie Saferes. I am a PCA from Lynn, living in seven hundred years square. Thanks for everything. Mr. Phelan, yesterday I spoke with you at home to ask you for your support. You was very, very nice, very professional, very courteous. Thank you so much.
Counselor Calucci, motion?
Yes, for all of the reasons mentioned in the resolution, and we were from SEIU eleven ninety-nine, I'd like to make a motion to support this resolution.
I'll second it. Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer, absent Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Trahan?